Got about a minute to go here, folks. Okay, we can start the meeting. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the August 17, 2021, meeting of the Edina City Council. This meeting is being held both in person and electronically. All members of the city council, some staff, and presenters are participating from the council chambers. Others are participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to cover for those hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. The city has committed, of course, to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters, just as we have been doing all during the COVID era. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important you know that all public hearing comments are read before we take action. You do not need to submit the same testimony in another way. All testimony is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there'll be two opportunities to provide comment, either in person or via telephone. The first is the community comment portion of the agenda. You're allowed to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. People may also speak during the public hearing after staff and the applicant have made their presentations. If you want to call in for community comment or to provide testimony for the public hearing, call 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 6654254, 6654254. Individuals in the room will be invited, that's the council chambers, to come forward to speak first, and then we'll hear from people that are calling in and are waiting in the electronic waiting room. You'll be given three minutes to speak regardless of whether you're here personally with the council or you're remote. For those in the room, the red light at your podium will turn on when you're out of time. Staff will let anyone know who calls in if they go over the three-minute mark and they need to wrap up their comments. Remember again, you do not need to speak at the meeting or call in tonight if you have already provided testimony. Feel free to speak at the meeting or call in if you have new comments or information to bring forward you think will have value to the council and its deliberations. To make sure residents have an opportunity to participate, we will not act tonight on the public hearing matter, just a single public hearing matter this evening. We won't act on that matter or consider it. That's a proposed right-of-way vacation easement at 7300 Claridin Drive. The public hearing will remain open until noon Monday, August 30. You can leave a voicemail with your testimony at 952-826-0377, 952-826-0377, or submit a comment through the form online at BetterTogetherEdina.org. So thanks in advance to your patience as we work to conduct this meeting in a hybrid format. We hope there will not be any issues, but be assured that we will do our best to continue the meeting as best we can if there are any problems that arise. Now we will call the meeting to order, and I request Clerk Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have published a form of meeting agenda. It's the one we have in front of the council this evening. Is there anyone on the council or anyone from staff who wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any way? Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, second by Councilmember Pierce to adopt the meeting agenda as shown, as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Now we are on to community comment. We will now hear from residents who would like to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers in council chambers will go first, and callers will be allowed to speak that called in via the telephone. To participate in community comment by phone, remember the number is 800-374-0221, conference ID 6654254, 6654254. An operator will ask for your name and street address. To get in the queue to speak, press star one. You'll be given three minutes to speak as a reminder. For those in the room, the red light at your podium will turn on when you are out of time. Staff will let you know, will let anyone know who calls in if they go over the three-minute mark, as I mentioned earlier. Is there anyone in the council chambers that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them this evening that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, sir, please come forward. You need a mask on, too, sir. Just a reminder that if you're in any public building in Edina, you got to have a mask on, so, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to commend Carolyn Jackson and Mr. Kerry Teague for visiting--
Would you give us your name and address, please?
Greg Wilson, on the Belmar Lane, 6320 Belmar Lane.
Is that microphone on? Can't hear.
Yeah, if you could hold it just a little closer.
Can you hear me well?
No.
Please, if you want to hear, maybe mine doesn't work. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Carolyn Jackson and Mr. Teague for visiting--
Would you restate your name and address first, please? I think it was hard to hear.
Greg W. Wilson, 6320 Belmar Lane.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council people and Mr. Teague for visiting Blake Road and Belmar Lane regarding a lighting issue. I'd also like to thank the mayor for visiting the Waterman Project. And I was here last week and that you were out there and did a field test on that. You guys also did field tests. The issue I want to address tonight is to take a look at the ordinance 361260. I've highlighted it here. This is the ordinance the way it stands. Can you see it or read it?
Yeah, it's coming into correct view now. I think it was a little bit unclear there. No, it's coming into focus. There we go. Now we can see it, Mr. Wilson.
This is the ordinance that you guys have now. And it's created a horrible problem for my neighborhood. I'm not going to discuss that issue because it's under some legal problems or issues right now. But I do need some help. This is a suggestion that I'm making to add to this. And I think there's a city attorney here. He needs to also be helpful to me because I'm not a legal lawyer. But I wanted to make some suggestions, and I'll turn this in if I can have this submitted to the record. I don't have to read it. But what the ordinance is doing, it's so broad that it's just impossible to comply to. If you do comply to it, it's still way out of line. So this is what I'd like you to take a look at.
All right. I think, yes, many of the folks on the council are aware of this issue. And I know Member Jackson's been out there, and I've talked to her in detail about it. You go ahead and finish your comments.
The last issue here, I'd like you to refer to the last council meeting. Kerry Teague spoke in favor of Interlaken Country Club and to calm the neighbors on Waterman, remembering that I've lived in the neighborhood since 1950. He talked about the lights that are going to be in compliance with Interlaken. And he mentioned the word, quote, "lights will be downlights, and they will not go past the border." In my suggestion, I asked that you strengthen the word "border" to be "right-of-way." You can do that on your own. If you look at the council meeting, you'll see Mr. Teague making this statement. The confusion is the city staff is making it all as one paragraph. They're not dividing out the foot candle and the fact that it shines beyond the border. That's the issue. I'd be more than happy to work with anybody. I invite you to drive by the Blake Road address. I invite anybody in Edina to drive by there. It's not acceptable. I'm also going to include one other piece of paper from the Lake Shore News, and it's regarding Long Lake and their nuisance ordinance that they are defining or redefining. That's all I've got.
All right, Mr. Wilson, would you hand all those documents you want to make part of the record to the clerk?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He'll take-- all right, thank you. And I did try to reach one of your neighbors, and I keep playing telephone tag with her.
I understand. It's an extremely frustrating issue.
Okay, very good.
I need your help.
Thanks for coming in. We're going to work on that, I think. I don't think I know. Anyone else? Wish to address the council on a matter that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing? Welcome.
I need to be taller. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 South Dale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. And I'm here this evening because of my concern about the comp plan. I don't really understand what is happening.
Ms. Davis, could you speak up just a little bit with these masks on? It's more difficult.
I know it's terrible.
And I know you're a soft-spoken person, and this is hard, but--
Well, it's kind of you to say.
Just try hollering at us, and that might--
Okay. Residents volunteered hundreds of hours on this plan, and I can only imagine the hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on staff and consultants. I worry that residents were misled about their involvement in that process. I know my neighbors in the Wooddale Valley View area spent a tremendous amount of time crafting their small-area plan, a plan that won accolades from the city council. But the latest developer plan totally disregarded it. And to add insult to injury, he dumped a massive pile of dirt on the Burley site. And I want you to know, I'm an adopt-a-storm-drain volunteer, so I spend a lot of time sweeping the streets. And if that appeared in my neighborhood, I know a lot of the dirt ended up in Lake Cornelia. I don't think a resident would be allowed to do that. I drove past last night. There are finally some barriers around it, but there's still a honkin' big pile of dirt on that site. Next, my concern is the Greater South Dale District Plan and the South Dale Design Experience Guidelines. That plan really took a tremendous amount of time. Again, volunteers put in hundreds of hours, as did city staff and consultants. I attended a number of meetings and encouraged my neighbors to attend. I sent invitations to the open houses and assured neighbors that they had a say in the plan. Their ideas mattered. This past weekend, I reviewed both the district plan and the Design Experience Guidelines. I found multiple examples of concern for our neighborhood, from special sensitivity related to new building development near the neighborhood to ample tree canopy, extensive setbacks, lower-scale buildings, gradual transitions, and build-to-scale. One of the favorite statements that I found in that document was the need for revised development dialogue and a more transparent, democratic, and collaborative development review process. I remember when the plan was approved. I felt our neighborhood would be respected and protected. And how is that working? Based on the last few months, not so well. My biggest concern now is the growing level of anger and distrust I'm seeing, not just in our neighborhood, but throughout the community. Edina can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening that's in chambers on a matter that's not scheduled for a future public hearing or not on the agenda this evening? All right. Director Bennerott, anybody on the line?
I do not have anyone on the line.
All right. Pursuant to your usual advice, we will wait a minute or so before we proceed.
Mayor Hovland, I think you may move on with the agenda.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. All right. The next matter on our agenda that generally follows community comment is the city manager's response to community comments from the prior meeting. And in the prior meeting, we had several residents that appeared and had questions about, I think, status on fire stations and concern about the 7250 France Avenue South, and I think one other matter as well. And it'll turn now to Manager Neil for his response to the items that we had come before us last meeting. I think you were appropriately on vacation with children visiting from another part of the globe. So nonetheless, you'll still have to handle these matters, so.
Yep, I will. They won't go away on their own. The first one was Andy Brown. And Andy has talked to the council on many occasions about, in his view, the importance of siding and building two new fire stations, relocation of current Fire Station Number Two, and the construction and equipping of a new fire station, Fire Station Number Three. Both of those recommendations are part of an overall recommendation that we had received from a consulting group that we've been working with on planning for that important aspect of our city services for the future. And with regards to Fire Station Number Two, we have gotten to the point now where we are really concentrating a lot of energy on two particular sites. I won't name them at this point just because we are working with owners on this time about possible acquisition. And we want to talk to council members in closed session because naming them in a public session has an upward pressure on the price of that property once it's named by a city government. So I can tell you that in one case, it would be a site that would be a cooperative, most likely a cooperative project with a private real estate partner. The other site would be a straight purchase. We're engaging our consulting team to assist us in looking at the footprint of a potential Station Two there and how they would fit on both of those sites. So that's what we're doing right now, and that's been moving along at a pretty brisk pace this summer, actually. Station Number Three is one that we will get, we'll start more action on once Station Number Two is solidified. The other speaker at last week's meeting was Erin Brown. And she talked to the council about her concerns about the condition of 7250 France Avenue. And she is rightly concerned about that, as city staff is concerned about it as well. There have been a number of different intrusions into the building, even though it's been secured by fencing and other kinds of measures. There have been some vandalism that's occurred in the building. It looks horrible and definitely is an attractive nuisance in the community. We have started the process of working with the owner, trying to be cooperative with the owner, but also threatening our ability to condemn the property because of its condition and ultimately to raise it. So we've worked with the city attorney's office to move that aspect of this forward. One thing I can tell you that is going on behind the scenes is a transition in ownership of that property. We hope to, an owner, that we have a little more faith in in terms of being able to work cooperatively and remedy the problems there. So that's the response to both of the speakers from last time.
All right, very good. That prompt anything from council members? All right, very good. Thank you, Manager Neil. Next matter on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson that we adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda items in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Just one thing that we usually try to do with the consent agenda. One of the items is the accepting donations. If we're going to get a donation to the city of Edina, we've got to have a supermajority accept that donation. And this reporting period, I want to report that the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, which has done so much with our public safety people, provided $15,000 to the Edina Police Department for safety equipment, and then a couple of generous gifts on behalf of, in memory of Phyllis Peterson, I should say, from Robert Merrily Kissler and Doris Hedston. So thanks to those folks in our community for those generous gifts on behalf of Phyllis Peterson, who has passed away. All right, we are now on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. We've got a couple of new city employees to introduce. And the first one is going to be our new finance director. And Manager Neil, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll ask her if she will come up to the podium right now. I want to introduce our new finance director to you. Her name is Alicia McAndrews. We were fortunate enough to attract some really high-quality candidates for the position of finance director, and we selected Alicia from among those candidates. We were happy to have her joining our team, and she started last week. And so this is her first council meeting that she's been on board. And I wanted her just to have a chance to introduce herself to you because you will work with her in her role as finance director, so.
Yeah, good. Well, Ms. McAndrews, welcome again. It was nice to have you upstairs in the work session as we worked on budget matters. And please, a few comments from you would be appreciated.
Sure, thank you, council members. It's really an honor to be here. As Scott said, I've been here for a week, and it's been a week of welcoming from all the directors and staff. It's been fabulous, and so it's truly an honor to be here. I'm coming from the state of Minnesota, so my background's in state budgeting, but very thrilled to make a shift to local government. I'm not from Edina, I'm from Lakeville, but have lots of roots here. My mom grew up in Edina, and I even coached a couple summers at the Edina Country Club swim team. So, like I said, I've got roots here and just thrilled to serve this community, so.
Well, welcome, or pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
We all look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Thank you, Ms. McAndrews. And then our finance director wasn't the only person who retired. Our police chief retired as well. And Manager Neil, you've gone through a thorough process there and recommended a new police chief for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, another similar storyline. We had some very qualified folks who applied to be our chief of police. This is an exceptional police department in the metro area, and we were able to secure Mr. Milburn, who had been the deputy chief in Brooklyn Park. And he's joining our force, and his first day was yesterday. Mr. Mil-- Chief?
Thank you.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, council members, I am very honored and humbled to be the next chief of police for the city of Edina. As mentioned, I come to you from the city of Brooklyn Park, 29 years of experience, and I think that's prepared me well for this new position here, and I couldn't be more thrilled to take on this role. Under my leadership, just a couple of quick things you can expect moving forward. Our officers, our staff, are going to continue to provide the high level of service to Edina residents and visitors that deserve that and people that are in crisis that need us. We'll continue that work. But oftentimes, a question that comes up is what do we do when we're not responding on one call? And much of our work will be focused on crime prevention efforts. And Edina police officers and staff have done a great job of that. There's always opportunity to improve upon and expand upon that role. And we'll also pay close attention to and expand upon our community engagement efforts. That is very much a very important role that we have to play in the community of Edina and around the metro area. And so we're going to expand on that work as well as we move forward. And as you know, police work is very difficult. And so we have to take care of our officers and our staff in the police department. And so we're going to place a premium on that and making sure that our staff are taken care of and they are positioned to take on the challenges in law enforcement ahead of them as their careers develop over time. So I'll stop there. I want to thank you all for the opportunity. I really do appreciate it. And again, I am humbled and honored to take on this role. Thank you for having me.
Chief Milburn, so pleased to have you here. Thank you. In the next and final portion of the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda involves follow-up on our staff's part. Brian Olson, our Public Works Director, and some of the other folks from his department are going to make a presentation. We had some residents that spoke to the council probably about a month ago now about our snow and ice management practices and had some best practices ideas in mind. And I think the staff has taken it to heart. It's an important issue to be considering in our community, and we're all looking forward to that report tonight. Director Olson, and those folks that testified in front of the council a month ago are all here tonight and eager to hear your observations on their proposals. So welcome, and please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's an honor to be here tonight. I'm glad we're able to talk and talk about the accomplishments that we've done over the course of the last five years in our winter maintenance activities, specifically in regard to the goal of reducing salt use within our community. We fully understand how important this goal is, and it's my hope that I'm able to talk a little bit about the existing snowplow policy, introduce key staff members, outline some accomplishments that we've had since 2016, identify the effectiveness of those accomplishments, and then outline a future strategy moving forward, and then open it up for questions. So before you this evening is myself, John Shear. He is with, he's the concrete street supervisor. John has been here since 1985. He's got 36 years of experience. Sean Anderson is our asphalt street supervisor. He has been here for 22 years and also has a significant amount of experience. Gunner Casa is our equipment operations supervisor. He's been here since 2006. And to be honest with you, these three guys are control central for our snowplow operation. They do, from diagnosing a storm to researching advances in technology, looking for more effective Brian solutions, responding to citizens and residents. They are the control central. The heart of the program, as you know, which has received national recognition being that we were number one in snow plowing in the last six years, is due to all the drivers and the routes. These guys do a great job, and I wanted to talk a little bit about what our program is. So with over 237,000 miles and 66 miles of city-maintained sidewalks, our snowplow operation is second to none. During a typical snowplow event, we utilize 25 plow trucks, four loaders, five sidewalk plows, and countless pickup trucks to do two parking ramps, all the parks, parking lots, trails, et cetera, all of the utility building driveways. And along with that, we have an existing snowplow policy. This policy was mentioned in the most recent NOVAC study. Before I really talk a little bit about this, I want you to understand that we realize that the city of Edina plows at a lesser-- that the city of Edina plows at a lesser amount than most of the neighboring communities. Normally, their triggered amount is two or three inches, sometimes as much as four, before they'll go out and do an all-out plow. We start our plowing with an inch and a half or more, but there are other conditions that get us out there, too. Drifting of snow, icy conditions, which seriously affect traffic, travel. And that's, so, our snowplow policy hasn't changed all that much in the last few years, probably since 2012, I believe, is when it really kind of changed a little bit. This is a very flexible snowplow policy. How we implement this policy is on the next slide. We have competing demands, and the way we look at it is, we recognize and appreciate that we know that there are water bodies within the city that have impairments that are on the federal impaired waters list. We understand that there, Lake Cornelia has an issue with algae, so we understand how important this issue is. So, we try to balance our changes to make sure that we equally put weight to each of those competing demands. Public safety is a number-one concern as well. Quality of life is basically the expectations that residents have with the timeliness of our snow removal activities. Some of the accomplishments that we've had since 2016, every snowplow driver in public works and park maintenance has been certified by the MPCA for smart salting, level one. And there are two different aspects of that. There's parking lot and sidewalk certification. There's also a smart salting for roads. All of our public works drivers are smart salt certified for roads, and all of our park maintenance individuals are certified for parking lots and sidewalks. So, there are a number of things that we've accomplished, like I said, in 2016. In partnership with the watershed district, we've expanded our salt brine station to include another blending cabinet and a 4,000-gallon mixing tank. In 2016, we also implemented a streamlined Edina 311 app for complaints about too much salt. We completed the installation of pre-wet tanks on all of our 25 snowplows. Our snowplows, and this is a picture of the snowplows, typically last between 12 and 15 years old. They're not cheap vehicles. And as you can see on this, the dump box, on the side of the dump box is a pre-wet tank. Why pre-wet tanks are so important to us is that pre-wet tanks introduce moisture to the salt so that when it rolls off onto the street, it doesn't roll right to the curb, and it sticks on the street, starts to activate, the chemical starts to activate right away, so we can use less salt with those. So, I'm proud to say that we finished that in 2016. In 2017, we participated, that was the beginning of the program. We participated in a four-year program that was done by the University of Minnesota and funded through the Local Road Research Board. It's called Adaptive Management to Improve Deicing Operations. The goal of this research was to link our automatically collected data from our GPS information and compare that with the automatically collected water quality data that they took over the course of three winter seasons. In 2018, we expanded our salt brine system. This is our salt brine system. Picture on the left is what it was in 2016. The picture on the right includes a new blending cabinet, an additional 4,000-gallon tank, and a 9,000-gallon tank. These are important for us because we've dedicated a lot of time and effort to try to utilize anti-icing equipment so that we can reduce our salt use. In 2018, I served on the member of, as a member of the Technical Advisory Committee for MINDOT, me and a county engineer, and all the rest were MINDOT employees. We developed and created their salt sustainability program. They basically were looking for best management practices for how they can reduce the amount of salt that gets into the environment. If you were to ask them, I would think that their equilateral triangle wouldn't be equilateral. They focus a lot more energy and effort on the high-speed roadways, so safety is incredibly important for that facility. Additional capacity or accomplishments that have been done. We purchased and implemented a salt brine equipment for the 50th and France Association. We rewrote, and I didn't put this on the slide, but we rewrote a level-of-service agreement with that district to make sure that we were managing expectations within that district. Reports are that since we've used salt brine equipment on those vehicles, that we've used about half the amount of rock salt within that district than in previous years. We also installed brine equipment on all of our sidewalk machines. I should say, at this point, we don't typically salt sidewalks. We only go back after we get a complaint, or if we notice a real slippery spot or icy condition, and we use a lot of, we use the salt brine on those activities rather than rock salt, depending on the temperature, but most of the time, we use salt brine. In 2019, in cooperation with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, we utilized Joma blades on four plow trucks to aid in the salt reduction. We actually got five or six, if I'm not mistaken, five or six different sets, but we only used them on four plow routes. And there's some discussion about the effectiveness of those blades, but they're a softer blade that fits on the bottom of a plow. And in this particular storm, which is, this is a picture from the Adaptive Management to Improve Deicing Operations report from the Local Road Research Board. This is a picture that was shown. The darker portion of the road up on the top was a route that had a Joma blade. The portion of the roads closer to the truck did not, they had steel blades. So, in this particular event, there was a benefit to having Joma blades. If you remember, we, I think we got on Channel 11 news for that. So, all of these are efforts in order to reduce our salt use. 2020, we implemented a new anti-icing truck, thanks to your funding that particular piece. It is shown in the middle of the three trucks. The two on the side, on the right-hand side, those are hook trucks that basically have to be converted back to snowplows. The most critical time to do any anti-icing is directly before the snowplows go out, and so, having a dedicated vehicle for anti-icing allows us to be much more effective with our brine use. 2020, we built the covered salt storage facility. Again, thank you for that investment in our reduction in salt use. As you can see on the left-hand side, this was where we handled all of our salt. The pavement is completely covered in salt. We try to clean it as quick as we can, but oftentimes, we're doing the delivery and hauling of salt right before a storm, so most of that stuff has precipitation that is occurring at the same time. So, the salt tends to wash away into the storm sewer. And so, now with the covered salt storage facility, we're going to be able to deliver, load, and unload all the trucks undercover. Couple of things that we do annually is a snow day training and calibration of all of our trucks. We also use, this is the GPS data that I was referring to earlier. Each truck logs the engine hours, the total distance traveled, and how much distance is when they're spreading salt. So, it allows us to personally account for each of the tons of salt use that we have for each of the drivers, and it's been a very valuable tool. So, how have these accomplishments affected our salt use? I did a presentation to the EEC in 2016, and at that time, I had an opportunity to go over the prior five years or six years of salt use, and we were using 3,200 tons on average per year. Just recently, I completed that same analysis, and the average salt use that we've had between 2016 and 2021 is 2,300 tons per year, which is more than a 30% reduction. This is not an easy thing to do. It is not easy to reduce salt and still maintain that same level of service, but we've been trying to do that in a smart way, and these are our future strategies to reduce salt Continue to shift from granular products to liquid products. The primary focus of this is to prevent that ice pavement bond that you get before a storm. Anti-icing and pre-wetting is one of the ways to accomplish that. It allows us to spend less energy and scrape it closer to the pavement, which then allows us to put less salt down. We also want to continue to research equipment upgrades. One of the recommendations from the Adaptive Management to Improve Icing Operations with the Local Road Research Board was to expand the use of Joma blades. We're going to look into that and hopefully move forward with, maybe not all trucks have Joma blades, but expanding that program. Continue to research temperature-appropriate material like magnesium chloride and calcium chloride. I know there's still chlorides, but what it allows is, it allows the melting temperature to be lowered, which then allows us to be, it's more effective for a longer period of time, and we can use less product. So, we want to continue to research those materials. Consider pavement sensors on the plow trucks. This was a recommendation that came out of the Adaptive Management Program from the Lower Road Research Board. And any brine system upgrades as needed with those additional trials. Continue annual calibration of all equipment. Fully utilize the new covered salt storage facility. Continue to support narrowing of streets under the living streets policy, training, and I don't think I should go through all of those training opportunities. Most of them are MPCA training activities. The Fall Maintenance Expo is an opportunity for our operators and our supervisors to go to see what kind of new technological advances there's been in equipment. It also gives them an opportunity to talk to other plow drivers, to see what's working for them. That's a goal to continue to attend that. More presence at the annual salt road salt symposium. I've attended that in the past. I didn't last year. I think we're going to try to get some of our supervisors to go to that as well. Our snow day, I didn't really mention that in the previous slide, but the annual snow day is an opportunity for us to talk with vendors, and in this case, we're going to invite Larry Baker, who was the author of the Adaptive Management to Improve Deicing Operations report through the Local Road Research Board, to have him come in and talk to the guys and kind of reiterate some of his recommendations. We want to continue partnerships with the watershed districts to secure funding for those technological advances and respond to any requests for salt cleanup. So, you know, these guys do their best to track salt use, whether they follow behind, these supervisors follow behind the operators and see if they're putting too much salt down or not enough salt to make sure that we get the final end product that we're looking for. But they can't follow them for every mile that they plow. That's the reason why we have the Edina 311 app. We want them to report. We want residents to report if they see something that is, in their opinion, too much salt. We rely upon forecasting programs. Great Lakes Weather Service, they give us four or five emails every time there's a snow that's coming in, but every snow is different. There are some that have huge variations in temperature from the beginning of the storm to the end of the storm, and so, they, over the radio, will talk to their operators and let them know, you know what, you need to put a little bit more down. We started at 150 pounds per lane mile. You might need to go to 200, or might want to ratchet it back a little bit. They do a great job in communicating with each other. Each one of them has a little niche, if you will, and Gunner is obviously the equipment operations supervisor, so he knows the equipment in and out. Shawn handles the pre-ice and AVL GPS equipment. AVL is Automated Vehicle Location Devices, and he also helps with transition to liquids. John, they've called him the weather bear, because he has, okay, so we have a dedicated forecasting system that we pay for every year, but he has probably 20 other websites that he looks at when a storm is coming in, and they spend an incredible amount of time trying to gauge how the storm is going to react with the roads, what the pavement temperatures are. They do a really good job communicating back and forth with each other. So, I have them all on the screen here, because if there's questions that I can't answer, and they're in specific to any one of those topics, they're here to help.
All right, thanks, Director Olson. I think you're standing for questions now, and there are questions from council members? I know that we had a presentation, and some materials were supplied with some, I think, ordinances from other communities. Did you have a chance to look at any of those?
Yeah, we did, and we actually used those ordinances when we looked at the 50th and France district. You know, throughout my presentation, I didn't really highlight it, but there are process improvements that are important to reduce in salt use. There's behavioral issues that we try to improve as we move forward. I compare it to, I compare it to, this is a big topic, but global warming, right? Okay, so if you think about your dashboard in your personal vehicle, you have now, pretty much every new vehicle comes with an economy, fuel efficiency dashboard that you can see. That 20 years ago wasn't possible, but it allows you to immediately change your behavior to improve your fuel efficiency. If you care about that and you want to try to reduce the amount of fuel used, you can immediately change your behavior. We have the same thing in the salt industry. We have automated AVL equipment that can display what pounds per lane mile that they're instantly delivering, how many times they blast at an intersection because they need a little bit more salt there to overly protect it. So, there's behavioral changes, there's procedural or process improvements that we can make. You know, the bottom line is that we're doing what we can to reduce salt use as best we can. We use that information from the different ordinances to create and draft the 50th and France district, but the city is a big, is a lot different animal. And so, we haven't felt the need, because we are accomplishing in reducing salt as best we can, but if that's the direction, or if you want us to go forward and change our ordinance, we can do that.
Okay. Is there an underlying policy, too? I think you have a policy as well as...
There is an underlying policy, and that's what I showed... There is an underlying policy, and that's what I showed you. That's what's shown on the...
Was there anything about any of these other policies that cities have that we've adopted or already had in place?
I think that there's more narrative when it comes to reducing salt use. I don't know that, at the end of the day, that we're going to be able to reduce salt use anymore than we already have. I think that we have a really good balance right now with our Public Works and Park Maintenance employees. They get it. They care. They care about reducing salt, and we try to provide a consistent message when we talk to them, when we provide training opportunities. So I'm not sure how that would change our operation.
Okay, good. Thank you for your candor. Other questions from council members or comments at this point in time? This is really good to get this historical progression on how we've improved and cut salt use by 30% from 2016 forward, and all these advances in the equipment. Really helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I've got two questions for you. The first one was about the annual calibration of the trucks. What time of year do you do that?
Generally, we do that in the October-November timeframe. Last year, we got caught where there was a snowstorm. That was before we actually had all the trucks calibrated. But yeah, it's normally in the late fall because that's when we transfer all of our trucks from hauling asphalt, pothole repair material, to now they're able to utilize salt.
Okay. And then over the course of the year or the season, how much do they fall out of calibration?
Gunner, do you want to answer that one?
You know...
Come on up.
Gunner, we need to have you come up, please, and identify yourself when you come up, please.
Yeah, you can use that.
When, they really don't fall out of calibration a lot on their own. We check the trucks generally when they fall out of calibration, is we've replaced a mortar on them, or a spinner, or some other thing, and then we recalibrate the truck then at that time. But from year after year, we can see that it doesn't. It's a very simple procedure that the truck has a computer inside of it that counts how many revolutions the auger is turning and putting out salt. And we have a scale underneath there that we weigh amount of salt. So if the auger turns 100 times, and we put out 700 pounds of product, we punch that number in, and then the computer knows, okay, for each revolution, it's putting out seven pounds of salt. And that's how it bases it, what it's laying down, and it's very accurate, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my other question is, there's a lot of information in your presentation. I want to thank you for putting it all together. Have we used our communications department to tell this story? And because I know one of the concerns is that, well, the city of Edina is doing a lot of things. We've reduced our salt use by 30%. But how can we help? I mean, snow plow removal is a matter of great pride in Edina, right? And we deal with a lot of snow. Have we used our communications department to talk about, A, what we're doing, and then B, how private individuals can do similar types of things, or to gauge what is enough salt? Have we ever put anything in addition to Edina or on a television program?
Councilmember Jackson, I think that that's a wonderful point, and we have a Public Works Pipeline that will be coming out in later this fall. Now that we're armed with this information, we will create an article for that. And I think that we would be open, and we talk with Jessica all the time about, you know, story ideas, and, you know, private applicators could be one story, and our story could be another one. Talk about the reductions in salt use and the best management practices that we're utilizing. I'm proud to say that there's a lot of communities that I'm familiar with, that I have connections with, and I think that we're one of the, we are doing as much or more than a lot of communities, and it's a good story to tell.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, Director Olson, for the thorough presentation. I learned a whole lot tonight, and want to thank you and your team for being on top of this. I just have one question, and that would be, it sounds as if you're very confident that you've adapted best practices, that you're reducing salt use, and you intend to do that going forward.
I do intend on going forward, doing that. I think that this is an evolutionary process, and our hopeful, I am hopeful that we're going to be able to find a technological advance that helps us. Salt is a very valuable tool for us, but it needs to be used responsibly.
Thank you very much. Very helpful.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmembers? Okay. Thank you, Director Olson, for being here with us this evening and giving us that report. We're going to move on now to the next portion of the agenda, which is public hearings. We only have one public hearing matter in front of us this evening, and that is the potential approval of a drainage right-of-way easement vacation at 7,300 Clerd and Drive. Director Milner is going to make the presentation, and then we'll take testimony from anybody that's interested in testifying in chambers, and then, of course, we'll leave it open to further supplemental testimony until we act on the matter two weeks from now. Director Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, like the mayor mentioned, we're considering an easement vacation at 7,300 Clerd and Drive. It's embodied in Resolution 2021-65. So this was, these were two individual lots originally, and they've recently combined. And the easements that went along that common property line down the middle are still there. So the request is just to vacate those utility and drainage easements through the center of this now that is one lot. So we have no issues with this. The private utilities have commented, they have no issues. We would recommend a motion to close the public hearing at noon on August 30, and then continue this action on September 9 at that city council meeting, similar to what you're doing with all the other public hearings. There is a spot on Better Together Edina for people to comment if they're interested in commenting online, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right. Director Milner has standing for questions. Councilmembers, have any questions? All right, standby. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony, and so we'll now hear from those who would like to provide testimony in this matter. Speakers in the council chambers will go first, as we mentioned earlier in the meeting. Others can call in now at 800-374-0221, conference ID 6654254, 6654254. An operator will ask for your name and street address. To get in the queue, press star 1. You'll be given three minutes to speak. For those in the room, you'll get a yellow caution light when you've got 30 seconds left, and the red light will go on, and you should be wrapping up your comments. And if you're calling in, we'll let you know when you get close to the three-minute mark so you can wrap up your comments as well. And if you've already provided comments or testimony via voicemail or bettertogetheredina.org, it's not necessary for you to call in again. And so we're going to continue to take testimony on this matter until noon Monday, August 30, as recommended by Director Milner, via the voicemail box for the city and the form on bettertogetheredina.org. And that's it. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a, nobody on the line? Okay, all right. Is there a motion from council to conclude the public hearing on this matter on Monday at noon August 30, and continue it to take testimony via voicemail and form online at bettertogetheredina.org until noon Monday, August 30, and continue the matter until our next meeting on September 9, I believe it was?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Member Stott, and second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening. Now we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We've got four matters in front of us this evening, and Manager Neil has the first matter there, and that involves something we've been working on for well over a year. We had some success at the legislature. He'll explain all of that, and what we're going to go and potentially ask the voters to decide whether or not we should be able to move forward on a couple of different projects. So Manager Neil, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, this is the, this is one of the culminating events of a couple of years of hard work with our legislators and with the state legislature specifically, about a request that the city made to be able to host a referendum of local voters to decide the fate of a proposed local option sales tax. We were successful this year at the state legislature in convincing the legislature to approve that opportunity for Edina voters. It will occur per the statute in the general election of 2022. One of the necessary actions that the council has to take if it wants to go forward with the referendum is to take this action that's being requested of you tonight, which is simply to say yes, to, that you accept the action and that you want to go forward with this. And so we have had some interaction with the state. This is the action that they need from us tonight. If we don't do this, we don't get to, we don't have a referendum in the fall next year. There's a long ways to go in terms of creating material, educational materials for the folks who are going to vote in that referendum. We'll be working on that, of course, during the upcoming year. But this action is simply the consent from the city council of a state legislative act, and it's necessary for that act to go forward.
Questions for Manager Neil on this matter? We've got a resolution in front of us, embodied in Resolution Number 2021-64. This resolution that passed will allow us to go to the voters in November of 2022 and have those voters determine whether or not they want to impose on themselves a half-cent sales tax in order to complete a couple of projects that we think are really important to complete, and one is the Fred Richards Park pursuant to the Fred Richards Park Master Plan, and of course, and some improvements at Braemar Park, is identified in the Braemar Park Master Plan, which has a significant cost element to it. There's a lot of work that needs to be done out at Braemar Ice Arena, and then generally out in Braemar Park. So thoughts from council members, or is there a motion to adopt a resolution? Member Anderson?
Yes, just one thought. I just think we're very fortunate as a city to be included in the local option sales tax legislation. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, if we are, if the voters embrace this in the fall of 2022, we go forward with some very significant improvements. Not only are they significant within the scope of what they do, but because it doesn't affect our local real estate taxes, doesn't affect our tax capacity, but in fact is generated on-site, more as a user vehicle than anything else, I think we're knocking on the door of a significant step and could increase our capital improvement capability going forward. So it's a big step if we can, if we can get this done. So I would move to...
You would support it, and you would move it?
I would. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2021-64. On to discussion. Councilmembers have thoughts, comments they want to make? Councilmember Jackson, anything? All right. All right. Nothing for me as well. I think we've worked hard on this, as we mentioned. I think it's, I think it's fortunate that we got through the legislature. That's the first part of the process. You have to ask the legislature for permission to go to your voters to see if they want to impose on themselves a half-cent sales tax to make these major improvements. We've covered that hurdle, and now we'll potentially go to the voters. So if there's nothing further with regard to Resolution 2021-64, no further discussion. Those in favor of adopting the Resolution 2021-64, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously. Look forward to having this conversation with the people in our community. All right. Next matter we have in this portion of the agenda is Resolution 2021-60, which is the potential establishment of the 4040 West 70th Street Tax Increment Financing District for a particular project at that location. And Director Teague has this matter for a brief overview and a reminder as a follow-up to the public hearing we held on August 4. And I guess Manager Nundorf is going to handle it as well. Are you both going to be involved on this, or?
Yes.
All right. Okay. I'll let you decide who's going first.
I'll pick it off this evening.
All right.
I'm Bill Nundorf, the city's Economic Development Manager, filling in for Stephanie Hawkinson, our Affordable Housing Manager, who's out this week. Wanted to bring this item forward. It's Resolution 2021-60. This does pertain to the establishment of a new tax increment financing district. It's located at the site of the 4040 West 70th Street property. On August 4, a public hearing was held on this proposal. We followed the standard process required by the state of Minnesota TIF statutes as far as public notice, getting information out to the various affected agencies, holding that public hearing, and getting the draft document out in front of folks. The hearing was completed last week, and a decision was laid over until this evening. I'm available for any questions if anything comes up. Also, Nick Anhut, our Public Finance Advisor from Ellers Associates, is online somewhere. I think our communications director has him somewhere online, and I know that Director Teague has a couple of comments to address questions that came up during the public hearing. But with that, I'll turn it over to Director Teague.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Manager Nundorf. Director Teague?
Okay, thank you. In response to some of the concerns that were raised at the public hearing in regard to setbacks for the project, when the council reviewed the land use request, I have to admit that the staff report was not clear in regard to where the setbacks were measured to. Part of the confusion comes in regard to the zoning ordinance amendment that was done about a year ago that regulates setbacks within the greater Southdale District a little differently. Those recommendations came from the Design Experience Guidelines in the district plan. The idea was to have uniform setbacks in the Southdale area. So on France and York is to have a setback from the face of a building measured to the curb along France and York, a setback of 50 feet. All east-west streets and all other streets to have a setback of 30 feet from the face of the building to the curb. The way that the city has traditionally and defined setbacks is measured to the front property line. And when we did that amendment, we didn't clarify in the definitions section that distinction on how we're measuring setbacks in the greater Southdale District. So staff will work with our planning commission over the next month or two to clarify those definitions within the code. So to be clear, on this project, the setback on 70th Street, measured from the face of the building to the lot line is 21 feet. Measured from the face of the building to the curb is 40 feet. And that was what was indicated in the staff report, but I didn't clarify where that measurement was to. The setback on Valley View Road, from the face of the building to the lot line, 38 feet. From the face of the building to the curb, 55 feet. This project still needs to come back for land use final approvals. We'll make sure that's very clear in the draft ordinance that establishes this zoning district. So there's still one more step in the land use regulations, and we will make that clear. So with that, again, staff is recommending that you approve the resolution that establishes the TIF district.
All right. And this is on the heels of approving the project itself, correct? I mean, it's coming back for final approval.
It will come back to the council for final approval, yes.
Questions for Director Teague or Manager Nundorf? Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Teague, there's been, as you know, quite a few emails, a lot of questions asked about the, number one, do we have, are we, are we subject to the state building code? That's a question that's come up. And is, does a state building code supersede our local building code? And then, in turn, is the local building code affected by the design guidelines? It's, that's a conflict, that's probably two or three questions, but they're, they seem... probably two or three questions. But there, they seem to be coming up, and so, I think any response you could give to that would be really useful.
Yeah, so, in reviewing building permits, our building department does go by the state building code. In terms of the design guidelines, when a project is requesting something of the city, a rezoning, a comprehensive plan amendment, we can put, we put conditions on those projects for things that may go above what the state building code requires. So, yes, so, to simplify, we go by the state building code in reviewing building permits, but for special projects, we can require, you know, standards that go above the state building code.
Anything else? Anything further? Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
Just to clarify that, the, the city cannot relax the state building codes. That's correct, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Question, yes. Councilmember Pierce?
So, I concur with the comments earlier from Member Anderson. Frankly, I'm still confused on what the setbacks are. And to just be clear, I mentioned this several times before. My concern is just the amount of trust that we build in the community is being clear with what expectations we're utilizing. And so, that, that's all I'm asking for. And so, I appreciate the clarification in the, the email that you referenced. We got emails again this week about a lack of clarity around what the actual setbacks are. And so, what, I have not been out to the site since the last time, probably two council meetings ago now. But what I would, would like to ask for is if, if this has been done, then I will make another trip out there to look at it. Can we just mark what the actual setbacks are more clearly on the site? And so, that, what it, what it feels like to me is we have a chart that is trying to clarify a position, but it, it honestly feels like it's moving. And, and I don't necessarily think that that's your issue. I think that's something the developer really should be doing, is clarifying on their site where those setbacks are. And so, if that property has lines now and it's clear what the setbacks are, and if there's a request from us to make a decision that is, is not according to a standard, that's fine. But we need to kind of snap a line to say, yep, this is what it is, so that the residents are clear what setback we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea. I can work with, with the property, with the developers to, I think we could stake out on the site, the, the building corners, and potentially the lot lines as well, to try to make that clear for where the building will be located on the site.
Yeah, that would be my, my preference, that, I know this sounds kind of simple, but let's spray paint where that building's going to be, so that it's clear to everybody, this is where it's going to be. It's clear on the, the back of the building. That one was the clearest one that we were able to walk, because it's frankly a straight line. And so, you can see where the existing curb is, and you can measure 10 feet, right? So, that one was clear, but it's just the front of the building where it was just a little unclear. So, I'd appreciate if we could clarify that and make it crystal clear.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Member Pierce?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Sutton, anything? Did that prompt anything further from anyone? Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, the conversations about the setbacks can probably be worked through over the course of, you know, the following weeks. I, I do think, though, that, and I'd like, I just want to put this in the record tonight. This project is vitally important, I believe, in our community. And, and the question that comes up, why? Because 11.7 million Americans are severely cost burdened by housing expense, and 24% of that number are classified as seniors, 55 and up. Then, the question becomes, why is that? Why do we, why do we need this here? Because the three legs of the retirement stool, if you will, are social security, private pensions, and personal savings. None of those is in great shape for 80% of the demographic that qualifies. So, the average social security check is $14,000 per year. That's, that's not cushy. Only 23% of boomers, 55 to 61, expect to receive income from a company pension plan. Those kind of went away in 2009, unfortunately. As for savings, most boomers have not saved nearly enough. In the worst case, it's really bad. 45% of boomers, 45% have zero savings in retirement. So, then, then, there's another question that comes up. Why do we need this here locally? Why in this location? Why are we, why are we suggesting this? Because people who live in more expensive apartments and are debt burdened can now have an option to have a lower cost of living. That's one of the reasons that affordable housing exists, and especially for age, in the age-restricted area. The truth is, a large percentage, the age-specific demographic, would qualify for affordable housing regardless. It's, it's, so, how does that apply for this project? We have a need for the housing type. There are people who will be moving here from other areas to be closer to children, adult children, and closer to their grandchildren, who have those same financial burdens. There are people who don't own a home, and they need to make arrangements. Other people who do own homes may have less equity than they anticipated, and that's why this is an important project here. I think we can work out some of those things. I want to, I know that we want to be legal in intent and not have questions that come forward about how is this constructed and why are we doing it this way? And we'll work those out as we come close to final approval. But I just wanted to make certain that those numbers at least got into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments at all? All right. I would just follow on to Member Anderson's comments and say that, you know, we, we determined on a preliminary basis to approve the development of 118 units of 100, 100%, affordable age-restricted housing that's going to be in place for 99 years. I think some of these issues we can deal with in, in final approval, including the West Promenade, which is a significant issue that we undertook at a preliminary at the hearing and talked extensively about, and then subsequently got a presentation from Director Milner about how we can go about protecting the neighborhood to the west. As this building would go in, and we want to make the, we want to make Valley View, we want to soften the landscaping there and slow down the traffic, and also provide an effective, I think, visual and sound barrier there with natural vegetation and maybe some birmingham and some fencing. But we're not finished with that part of the project either. But that was what I think this council decided it wanted to do on a preliminary basis, and I think that's an important part of the final approval process. And I'm expecting that we'll be able to make that determination then. So, I'm going to support this matter as well. I think this doesn't happen without this being a, having, having the appropriate, appropriate kind of tax income financing that we need to allow this project to go forward. So, I'm going to support this as well. Members Sutton, did that prompt anything from you?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Jackson?
Just a, a brief comment. And that is, I think, one of the things, I want to reiterate what Member Pierce said about trust, and, and trust between us and the, and the neighborhood, and between the developer and us and the neighborhood. Because this is a really important project, and I hope that it's one that shines and doesn't leave a lot of sore spots in the process of going forward. So, I strongly support this, but I also want to, you know, recognize the concerns of the neighborhood and, and say that, that we want to work together and make this something that's really positive for everybody involved.
Thank you. Member Jackson, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-60, which would establish the Tax Income Financing District for 4040 West 70th Street?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson, to adopt Resolution 2021-60, which would establish a Tax Income Financing District for the project at 4040 West 70th Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the Resolution 2021-60, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening for questions that may come up. Really appreciate it. All right. Now, we're going to move on to the third item in this portion of the agenda, and that is potential site plan review, zoning ordinance change, potentially revised overall development plan. This is done in the Pentagon Village area, 4911 77th Street West. And Director Teague is going to give us an overview here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, as mentioned, this is a revision to the overall development plan for Pentagon Village. The proposal is to replace the approved 153-room hotel with a 200-unit apartment. 20% of the units would be for affordable housing. The Planning Commission considered this request, and they had two motions that failed on a split vote of four to four motions to approve and to deny. The main concern, and this was a concern raised by the city council and during the, the public hearing, last time you considered this was primarily along that north lot line and how close it is to the internal street and landscaping. So, the plan itself is consistent with the overall development plan that showed tight setbacks there. However, the site plan that was approved for the hotel did have more green space in that area. In response to public hearing comments in regard to the comprehensive plan, where there was references to when the Pentagon North project went through, there was a housing proposal there, and there was an amendment to the comprehensive plan. That is true. It was for the Pentagon North project. When the Pentagon South project went through, there was no housing proposed, was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Even if the housing were proposed at that time on the site, the overall density is just 16 units per acre. It would have been in conformance, the density at that time was 30 units per acre. All that aside, the current comprehensive plan that was adopted by the council last year is what is regulating the site today, and that, that comp plan allows up to 75 units an acre. So, again, this, this plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff's recommendation is for approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. The applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have. They did provide some additional renderings that were included in the council packet this evening. And I believe Jay Scott, going to, the lead developer, is on the call to answer any questions as well. So, with that, I can turn it over to the council for your discussion.
All right, Director Teague, thank you. We've got two matters in front of us relative to this project, and it's Resolution 2021-61, which would approve the ordinance plan, and then 2021-10, which would be the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to revise, revise PUD 17. As Director Teague said, some of the main conversation during the council meeting was around that north elevation. I know, I know the, the developer and the architects and also RISE Development and, and Solomon have provided some supplemental illustrations of that north face of the building, and I'm sure that all the council members have seen those. Are there questions from council members or, or comments? Anybody have questions for the development team or for Director Teague? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question was raised about wood construction, and it's been my assumption that the state building code covers any fire risk and that there would be sprinklers and everything. But if you could just reassure the public that this would be a safe building in its construction, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, certainly. Wood construction is allowed under the building code. I believe it's up to six stories, and this building would be installed with, with a fire sprinkler system.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague or for the development team? It looks like we were able to handle this on a single motion. So, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-61 and Ordinance Number 2021-10? The zoning ordinance amendment, revised overall development plan, site plan review for 4911 77th Street West, and the waiver of second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried. All right. Solomon, thank you for being here this evening. Matter of move forward. And then, the last item on the agenda, this portion of the agenda tonight, and I guess the, really the main agenda, is a potential approval of a Resolution 2021-63, which would adopt and support Hennepin County's proposed Layout Number Two, it's called, for the Vernon Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. And Director Milner has this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Jennifer's going to bring up the, the one graphic. Hopefully, it's on your screen. It's not on my screen here, but this is the graphic. The county is looking for support for this project. This is the Vernon Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. They've been working on it about 14 months now with a consultant. We've been meeting among the, on the team. That meets monthly to discuss and ensure that the city's interests are taken care of during the design of the project. They're looking for support in Resolution 2021-63 for this layout. So, this is the graphic and the current layout. Some of the highlights, you can see the bridge is the big orange piece in the middle. We are widening sidewalks on both sides, big wide sidewalks to meet the pedestrian needs of the district. It ties in with the Interlockin Project we did a couple of years ago. You notice in the top right corner, that free right off the, off Highway 100 is now removed as part of this project. And there'll be just a dedicated right turn lane with a new signal at that intersection. Those are kind of the highlights. There's also one other note is near the liquor store, the sidewalk there's been expanded for a bus stop. So, Metro Transit and the county is working to move that bus stop to a much better location out of, not east of the intersection where it gets really tight and there's no room. So, they're moving it to the west side, and we're creating a little space there for people to wait for the bus prior to that signal system. And that Metro Transit's been part of those discussions. So, those are kind of the highlights from that current layout, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Jackson?
So, I've got a, a bunch of questions for you. First of all, we, I received some comments about this concern, and you and I have talked about this, but the left turn lane going westbound that would then turn down onto, towards Gus Young Lane. The concern was that this would encourage speedier traffic through the intersection rather than having the two lanes with the light as it is, or the two lanes with the left turn as it is currently. And so, it's three lanes. But, but I think that you explained to me that given the changes, the traffic, that's really a safety concern, but can you say why that left turn lane is necessary there?
Yeah, not only did we study it with the Interlockin Project and looked at current traffic and future projections, the consultant redid our work again, and, and the need for that left turn is, is needed based on current and future traffic volumes. We did look at, could we only do it with two lanes? It starts to back up operations to the east. So, it's really needed, but there's going to be improvements to the signal system. There'll be pedestrian-activated signals, crosswalks and things like that to help with the safety concern of adding that one lane. It's an extra 12 feet to cross that, but the timing will be set such that pedestrians can get across that crosswalk.
Good, thank you. And then, you presented to us, I think as the HRA, some ideas about the East Grandview area, but it involved the bridge over Highway 100 and pass-through. How does this, is there, do we need to ask for anything at this point in time to plan for an improved experience over that Highway 100 bridge and, and trying to, you know, get that future vision that you presented to us? What would be necessary for this project, and what would we need to do to make it happen?
Yeah, great, great question, Councilmember Jackson. This one does not account for that diverging diamond interchange that I showed, that we came up with, that E study as a concept. This is just a standard intersection there. We shared that idea with the council to see if there was strong support or not, whether we should move forward and, and kind of expedite that, a concept now with this project. You know, if I look at it just from an infrastructure standpoint, it'd be ideal to do it now, but this project won't preclude us from doing it in the future. So, the only thing that's holding kind of me up is if there's the council feedback, but also $5 to $7 million. I don't know where we'd come up with $5 or $7 million by 2023 to do the project, because all of our state dollars are already- all of our stated dollars are already accounted for on Blake Road and potentially the Wooddale Bridge and some other needs we have within the city. But I would say that this concept, if built, won't stop us from doing that in the future, because most of that work is on the bridge itself, and there's to be some adjustments to that traffic signal area that you see on the very right-hand side of this graphic. So if in five years or 10 years we decide to do it, we can still do it. There'll be a little bit of rework, but it's, it won't be a major redo of that intersection.
Okay, so we wouldn't be losing a lot of money if we don't do it now. It wouldn't, you know, $20 million or something.
No.
Okay, so it's a matter, if we had $5 to $7 million now, we would do it, you know, if we think that's a good idea, which I think it's a great idea, but it's not going to be detrimental in the future if we go forward with it as designed now?
Correct. You know, 80% of it's on the bridge into the east. It'd just be this intersection on the west side, you know, roughly 20% if I had to guess. So some tweaks to some of those curb lines, tweak to the signal system when we came back or if we come back to do that concept.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, those are very good questions that you asked. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Stotan?
I want to talk a little bit about the west side of this chart. So you show on basically Vernon, just to the west of Interlaken, five lanes of traffic. I know the Grandview transportation study contemplates that narrowing to three lanes instead of five. When does that begin to happen as you move west?
Immediately west. So basically, we laid out some concepts when we did the Interlaken project, and the county required this, so then as you travel east, you're just in your lanes heading when you hit that much higher traffic volumes. But basically, the transition would be from this intersection down to the next intersection for the Walgreens driveway. I guess that's where I would call it. So by that point, we would be transitioned down to three lanes and create that road diet, and then start to really improve those bike and ped facilities throughout the district.
And how would the bike and ped facilities interface here? Is it the purple kind of expanded sidewalk and other areas?
Yep. It would be, the sidewalk already exists on the, you know, the north and the west side.
Right.
It's already five feet. The real challenging piece is there's not even five feet between the curb and the parking lot with the Walgreens and our own liquor store there. So that's the real challenging piece. If we remove some of those aesthetic, you know, the black fence and those bollards, we create some space. So in the interim, we could remove some of that, you know, I call it aesthetics, along that corridor to improve the ped facilities. And again, it's a county facility, but we're looking for opportunities to work with them to make those improvements. But we feel there is enough space just to get the, a five-foot sidewalk in there, and as we start to lose those lanes, that's where we really start to open up that space by the time we get to the south half of that property with Walgreens on it.
And what's the contemplated timeframe for making those changes to the west of this project?
We don't have that scheduled at this point.
And this is scheduled for 2023?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-63, which would support Hennepin County's Layout Number Two for the Vernon Avenue Bridge Replacement Project?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second motion from Councilmember Jackson, second from Councilmember Stotan, to approve Resolution 2021-63, which supports Hennepin County's Layout Number Two for the Vernon Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. I don't think we've had any new correspondence come in. Manager Neil?
No.
All right. That concludes the main part of the agenda this evening. And then aviation noise update. I didn't get anything from former member Rindel.
Nor did I.
I see you shaking your head negatively. No. Councilmember comments? Let's start with Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one, I don't know, call it a public announcement. There are lots of folks in our community and in the nation that don't believe COVID is real. And I would just urge everyone, if you see a sign that says, please wear a mask, it's not a mandate, but it's helping protect yourself and others, I would just urge you to do that. My classmate of mine, undergrad classmate of mine contracted COVID and is now on life support. And so every once in a while, I'll get a random email from someone saying, you don't even know anybody who has COVID or who has passed away from COVID. And so with my classmate being on life support, I'm at like 22 people now that I know, and 12 of those 22 have passed away. And so I would just urge everyone, this is a very uncertain time. We're not sure, honestly, what's going on from a COVID perspective, but every measure that we can take as individuals and anything that we can do as a city, I think we should be doing that, so.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Stotan?
Nothing for me.
All right. Member Anderson?
Nothing for me.
All right. Member Jackson?
I just want to make a note of the Health Commission, the Community Health Commission asked us to look whether they want to go forward with stuff on opioid prevention education, and I thought their presentation was very well-written and informative, and I hope to see more from them.
Thank you. I have a few quick things to cover. Manager Neil and I and Lori Severson from the chamber attended the new teacher luncheon today. We've got 40 or 50 teachers, it seems like, coming into the system this year, and a great group of people, so that was a nice event. It's always a real positive experience. And then next week, they'll have their old teacher kickoff, I think at Coolman Field. And then I think today, I think this, actually, at 5 o'clock, the superintendent of schools was going to announce the position of the school district with respect to some of these masking matters, and I think the great news is all the kids are going back to school. And that's really a fantastic thing. And what they're going to do, as best I understand, is kind of go month to month on looking at masks, starting with everybody masked. And I think that's a smart, logical approach, so it doesn't seem like it's an interminable sort of commitment, but we'll follow the data and go month to month to Member Pierce's comments about the dangers of this COVID Delta variant in particular. So one of the things I was surprised about was that, I think 89%, 87% of the kids overall are vaccinated, but only 73% of the high school kids are vaccinated fully. And so that's a concern for them as well. And so that's another reason to have the masks on. So we look forward to that announcement, and I think it's great that all the kids are going back to school. Today, I participated in a climate change event for Conservation Minnesota. They had a kind of an Upper Midwest gathering of mayors that were involved, and cities actually involved in climate change issues, and I got a wonderful report and some talking points with respect to all the work that Grace Hancock is doing. And it was really, it was wonderful to be able to present the information that we've had in the city of Edina. Cincinnati was on the call, Traverse City, Michigan, Lincoln, Nebraska, and Madison, Wisconsin, and then Edina. And so it was fun to report out for Minnesota on things we had going on here. And then last night, Director Milner and I were over at Crossview Lutheran. We had neighbors in that part of town wanting to know all about sound walls and noise fences, and there's a distinction there that Director Milner brought up. And then also the proposed trail that we want to do along McCauley Trail. They had questions on that as well. I think there were probably 40, 50 people there as well. And Director Milner did a great job with the audience, and they were real inquisitive about everything. MINDOT is going to start a couple of projects over in that corner, either both north and south of 169, north and south of the cross zone of 169 next year. So at least I suggested, why don't you get your neighbor to get a petition as soon as possible? We'll send it to MINDOT. There's number 30 on the list, but you never know what might happen, especially with those other projects going on in close proximity. There could be some real economies of scale there that we could take advantage of, and it requires a 10% city contribution, and we could work all that out, and the neighbors seemed pretty enthusiastic about that. And then lastly, I wanted to just thank Lieutenant Aaron White for being with us this evening and representing the Edina Police Department here and helping keep us safe, not only here but in our community. Thank you, Lieutenant, for being here with us this evening. And then don't forget Edina Ed Fund event at the high school parking lot with music galours going on until 10 o'clock this evening. So if you want to get in your car and buzz over there, I'm thinking about doing that. We've got about an hour of time left to do it.
The manager hasn't spoken yet, though.
So that's it for me, Manager Neil.
Okay. Well, I'll try to keep this short. But gloomy. So I do want to say a few words about drought. We are still in a drought, and we're starting to see more tangible signs every day about what that means from a water consumption standpoint. We are connected, as you know, to the city of Minneapolis and their water system because a number of our customers and residents in the Morningside neighborhood have Minneapolis water that comes through our system, and so that, we do have a connection with them, and that's one source of water for our community. The balance of the community is serviced through deep water wells, a number of them around the community. Both of those sources, surface water and well water, are being stressed with the continued lack of rainfall. We are monitoring this consumption, but we are getting pretty close to the stage where we may have to order outright outdoor watering and irrigation bans. That will be a, it's a very important decision. It's a decision we don't take lightly, as we know that, you know, the city itself has millions of dollars invested in turf and also in professional landscaping all over the community. So to the extent that we can avoid an outright ban, we want to do that, but we will have, we may not have a choice if water levels get to the point where it looks like they're going. So we will look for rain and hope that it comes, and hope that it comes in a way that can rejuvenate our systems here slowly and carefully. But I just want to let you know that, that that's something that we're keeping our eye on, and it's an important issue to the community. And that's all I have tonight.
And I just want to briefly say as a follow-on, I just remembered, there was a fellow that lived in town, many of you remember him, Andrew Breen, who went to, out to the east coast to work. His son, Magnus, saved the life of somebody over in Wisconsin in one of the rapids over there, and I got notification of that. And so Manager Neil and I are talking about that. He lives in Edina, Magnus, and goes to Edina High School, and so I think it might be appropriate to recognize him here some night for that heroism that he exhibited in saving a person's life in Wisconsin, which he, you know, for, he feared for himself as he tried to save someone else. So we'll deal with that in good time here. So that's all for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Got a motion to adjourn? Member Stotan? Member Pierce seconds?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned. Now, wow.